Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the June 1st, 2015 regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. Tonight, we will have an agenda as follows. We'll entertain any visitors. We will approve minutes. We have Teaching and Learning Highlights featuring some art awards. We'll then have a discussion on the DECA, Distributive Education Clubs of America Challenge, with Mr. McCabe. We have some policies to do some first readings of. Our Policy Subcommittee's been hard at work, as usual, regarding field trips, late-night and overnight student travel, and graduation requirements. We'll then get an end-of-year update on the progress against our Foxborough Public Schools Strategic Plan for 2014 through 2017. We'll begin the discussion of the review of the Superintendent and the evaluation process that we follow. We will entertain other matters following that. And then, for the first time in a while, the committee will be going into executive session tonight for the purpose of discussing, negotiating strategies with union personnel. Specifically, this is the Custodial Workers Association and the Foxborough Crossing Guards that will be discussing an executive session. And then, we will return to open session after what we expect to be a relatively short executive session with the intent to vote on the proposed 2015-2018 Foxborough Crossing Guards memorandum of agreement. And, I have my amendment, which I forgot. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
You have it, right there.
I forgot, but we do have a vote tonight to appoint a school nurse, which, you're right, I remember seeing that. And that'll follow the DECA discussion and come before the first reading of policies. Thank you, as always. And, to begin on a lighter note, as we always do, I enjoyed Mr. Euchtna's comment to Mrs. Weiss that she did return, and we didn't scare her away after her first meeting.
And I apologize, I couldn't be present, so I want to officially welcome you to the School Committee, and I look forward to working with you.
You also, definitely.
Nice to see you back, at the second meeting.
It's not that bad, people.
Well, we did that for an illusion for you. We didn't want you to be just too discouraged the first round.
And someone else returned to us, which we were glad to see, Mrs. Spinelli.
Yes.
Oh, me? You were?
Melissa.
I was looking at Melissa, because I've been waving at her.
Melissa wasn't here last night.
Well, anyway, it's all about them.
This is a welcome-back party.
Dr. Burdost did a nice job in your absence.
Yes, I know. As no surprise to anyone.
Okay, so do we have any visitors tonight who'd like to be recognized at this time? Seeing none, we'll go right to approval of minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of May 18th. And I know we had a couple of thoughts on these minutes, Janet. You did a tremendous job, as you always do, but I think we might have a couple things we just want to add in. Steve, did you want to go first?
Just, it wasn't really Janet's omission, it was just I wanted to emphasize on page three of the two-page document, about halfway down where it starts with "Discussion Among the Committee Followed." Do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to say that we did also confirm with the staff their expert opinion on the textbook adoption having a long-term usability with changes in language arts over the last three years.
Do you have that written down on your file?
I can write it down and give it to you.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
I'm a lefty, but it'll take me a little longer, but I'll do it, sure.
Whatever you want to say.
Okay, done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Steve, just take a minute, then. So we're on the third paragraph of that section under the World Language Curriculum Review.
Mm-hmm.
And this is regarding the textbook adoption reference.
Yep.
And did you want to amend with a phrase there, or an additional sentence, or what was your thought?
Yeah, just, please add "textbook adoption" and "assurance of long-term utility" to the school department for the acquisition.
And assurance of long-term utility.
To the school department.
Yeah.
And the importance of world language instruction.
Yeah, yeah, it would go in front of the word "importance," that's...
Okay, I have it. You don't have to worry about it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is that clear, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did anybody else have any comments regarding the minutes?
Motion to accept as amended?
Let me just pause for one second, because I had one, and I think I was the one who personally requested that Ms. Janelle Erskine come and give us the annual PE requirement. And one of the things that I was probing on a little bit in doing so was just wanting to understand how that was going with regard to our athletes, if you guys will recall that discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And whether or not we felt that we had done the right thing in really requiring, of course, the state requires it, but us complying with the state requirement for PE. And I thought maybe we should just include in the minutes what Janelle's comments were, and I'll ask the committee to help me with the recollection, although I am looking at my notes. And what I remember her saying was that actually the electives turned out to be not quite as popular as she expected, and the reason was because even the athletes still felt that in PE, in the normal PE curriculum, 9 through 12, they still get life skills that are valuable, and that she really hadn't received any negative feedback, and therefore didn't recommend any change.
Correct.
And I think with that being relatively new policy, maybe we should just indicate that in case we ever want to go back in...
Yeah, because that's the reason.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the way everyone recalls it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right, so I don't think... Why don't we just add a sentence, then, at the very end, Janet? And let me see if I can fumble my way through it, but I'll take friendly amendments. But maybe just to comment that Ms. Erskine also indicated positive participation from student athletes, and therefore recommended no changes at this time.
Okay.
Does that capture...
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Was that one more time, Janet, or have you got that?
Ms. Erskine also indicated positive participation for student athletes, and therefore recommended no changes at this time.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
So, Steve, do you want to make that motion with those amendments?
Sure. Motion to accept as amended by Chairman Gardner and Steve Eden.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Five-zero. Thank you, everybody. Teaching and Learning Highlights, Ms. Spinelli.
Yes, I am so thrilled to have Ms. Kelly Akasha here, and two of our students, Amber and Brianna, to come up and represent our art students. They'll be coming to the guest table. And I have to say, what I said to them before the meeting, I feel there's been so many positive comments from the community and from so many different people about the talents of our art students in the past several years. And in the last couple of years, I think we just grow and grow and grow. And in informal language, I just said to them, really, the art department is really burning it up. They really are. So I'm thrilled that before the school year ends, we're able to have some of the students, the art students here, to talk about that. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Akasha to introduce them and to tell you all about art awards and everything else, fabulous art.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. We have a phenomenal team from K all the way up to 12 with art teachers. So, you know, it really is a testament to their dedication to the art department that makes us who we are and the recognition we've been getting. So, yeah, I'm here today with Amber Dophney. Amber is a graduating senior who will be attending Rhode Island School of Design this upcoming year, which I'm psyched to be here today because we have Ms. Weiss, whose daughter Juliette just graduated from Rhode Island School of Design, just Friday, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So this is exciting to be here with Amber when I was here with Juliette like five years ago for Scholastics.
Awesome.
And then Brianna Boger, who's going to an equally wonderful school, Mass College of Art next year.
Oh, great. That is something.
So both seniors are here with me. They can speak on behalf of Scholastics. They're multiple Scholastic Award winners. And then also the Foxborough Street Painting Festival. And both of them were in our inaugural AP class this year, too, so they can speak about So just an overview of Scholastics for people who aren't familiar with it. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Program is the country's longest-running and most prestigious national awards program, offering recognition and arts exhibition opportunities to students in grades 7 through 12. It's been going on since about 1923, so this is a long time it's been running. Each year, the Foxborough High School art teachers select the strongest student-produced pieces to compete at the regional and national levels. So we sit together and we look at pieces from all the classes over the year, and we think about what's the strongest pieces that meet the categories to compete against other students across the state. Once it's sent in, a select group of distinguished judges, all professional artists at both the regional and national levels, base their final decisions on three criteria. So it's all done blind judging. They don't get to see the students' names, nor what school they go to. So the judging's based on originality, technical skill, personal voice, or vision. And then this year, over 15,000 submissions were entered into the Boston Scholastic Art Awards with 2,000 students being recognized. So that gives you a little bit of a scope, the amount. So we are proud to congratulate 16 of our Foxborough High School students, who this year won a total of 27 Scholastic Art Awards. So if you're keeping track, we are staying one above last year. So increasing our awards each year, which is great. We have six gold keys, eight silver keys, 12 honorable mentions, and one national medal. And just going back, if you look at the top, when you hear us talking about Scholastics, you'll hear keys a lot. So at the regional level, students will get keys, which are little pins. At the national level, they'll get medals that are like Olympic medals. So the 16 students who were recognized this year, there is a selection of different grades, ranging from 10 to 12, and also you can see the different classes, so digital media, design, ceramics, sculpture, drawing, mixed media. So Brianna Boger, grade 12, who got a gold key and a silver key. Bailey Collins, grade 12, who got a silver key in design. Amber Dophney, right here, who got our national silver key this year. Gold key in mixed media, gold key in drawing, silver key digital art, honorable mention design, and honorable mention art portfolio. On top of other ones that we've got in past years, and same thing with Brianna. Julia Dillon, grade 12, who got an honorable mention in sculpture. Ethan Hicks, grade 10, so only a sophomore, who already got an honorable mention in digital art. Sophia Jaberry, grade 12, who got a silver key for her art portfolio and honorable mentions for sculpture. Sophia is also a graduating senior. She's going to be going to Syracuse next year for industrial design. Devon Lovely, grade 11, got a silver key for drawing. Olivia Manson, grade 10, honorable mention for digital art. Jeff Mello, grade 10, gold key for design. Marin Wilson, grade 10, silver key for ceramics. Emily Nutting, grade 11, who got an honorable mention in sculpture. Mike Relva, grade 10, got an honorable mention for mixed media. Molly Slyman, grade 12, honorable mention art portfolio. Matt Stamitoff, grade 12, two silver keys for drawings, one honorable mention for his art portfolio. Nick Shagru, grade 11, who got two gold keys for design. One of those gold keys is the senior's yearbook cover. So if you see the yearbook this year, that's one of the gold keys. And Holly Wilbur, grade 12, who got an honorable mention for sculpture. So the gold keys, our six gold keys, once they were awarded and we found out who they were for the regional level, we entered them into an exhibition in Boston. So it was at the 808 Gallery in Boston University from March 7th through the 15th, and it was hung up with all the gold key pieces from across the state. So you can see, this is on the Scholastic website. You can see Brianna's piece in the top corner, and Amber's national piece on the podium. So in our list, one of the things that the art teachers and I are so excited about is our five senior art portfolio winners. In the past, we've seen one, maybe two, of our lucky portfolio winners, but to get five is incredible. To have five means that a senior received an award for their entire portfolio, which consisted of eight pieces. So all eight pieces had to meet that criteria. And then they also had to submit a written artist statement. So the five seniors who got keys for their portfolios were Brianna, who got a silver key, Amber got an honorable mention, Sophia, silver key, Molly Slyman, honorable mention, and Matt Stamitoff. And I brought in some of their work, just so you can see the portfolio winners' work.
Brianna, is that the one that was in the picture a minute ago, hanging on that wall?
That's fabulous.
That's great.
So I brought in four pieces for each of the senior portfolios, just so you can get a little bit of a taste of what their portfolio looked like. And this is a piece from Brianna's AP portfolio, her concentration.
My concentration was about angels in everyday life, so it was about highlighting people who you wouldn't normally think of as an angel, because after my father passed away, I really wanted to focus on the ordinary, everyday person, so I made a lot of my pieces about people like that.
So these two pieces are from that portfolio.
That whole idea of the theme, I noticed, was really nicely explained in the gallery at Patriot Place, each student's theme. I don't think until I saw that, I realized that each year the portfolio has a theme, or that they are developing a theme. I learned a lot from that, so I thought the time they took to explain their theme for the gallery opening was really wonderful.
And that's...
It probably was the year of the year, I just don't know why it didn't, it just didn't hit me until this year, so that was...
No, that's definitely a good thing that you recognized. That's a testament to the AP class, because the AP is really pushing a concentration and developing a story within 12 pieces of work.
That was fascinating, I have to say.
So the students worked hard for their, yeah, their artist statement and their concentration. So this is Sophia's. And you can see the difference. So these are sculptural pieces. And Sophia's AP concentration was her inner light and her reflection of her religion So Molly's. Molly was in our AP class as well. Molly is one of our graphic design students, so again, you see a transition in the media. This is more typography-based, so Molly's the one that designed our empty bowl logo that we use when we run the Empty Bowl Project every year. She also worked with Barrows Company last year, redesigned their logo. That's sort of the math cards from last year.
Love that.
Such a great idea.
Matt Stamitoff. So Matt would be under our AP drawing. You can see the technical skills he uses in his drawing. This is Cumby's. You guys might recognize that. And Amber's. Do you want to talk about what your concentration is?
My concentration was, basically, I have a love for nature. I used to go camping with my family every year when I was a kid, and it really carried on through my life. And I wanted to show an appreciation for natural beauty and life around us, and I feel that a lot of times, you know, kids are glued to their phones, like you go out to the restaurant and you'll see all the little kids on their tablets and stuff, and I kind of wanted to pull away from that and show beauty in nature.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that drawing, or like a graphic media with other photography mixed in?
It's a painting, and also it uses natural elements, and so basically you could consider it mixed media. So it kind of goes in between sculptural and 2D.
This is Amber's national piece from last year. So last year, we had two national medals, and this was one of the two. So Amber is a two-time national medal winner. And then this is her piece from this year. Do you want to talk about that piece?
This was my sketchbook. For me, drawing in a new sketchbook, it's almost unconventional to destroy a blank page and sometimes can be a little intimidating, so I actually took an old Black Beauty book and decided to make it, you know, my new sketchbook, or my new, like, dream book, or just throw ideas, press flowers, and all kinds of, you know, cute little gizmos.
So these are a couple of the spreads inside her sketchbook that she worked on last summer. So the national winners get invited to Carnegie Hall for their medals. There's a ceremony at Carnegie Hall. And this is last year. Again, Amber, this is the second year that she's won a national medal. So last year, both her and Kaylee Tran, who is now a junior, got national medals, and they attended the national ceremonies. Do you want to talk about what that's like?
It was an amazing experience, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The entire time we were there, my dad kept telling, making us look more like tourists each time. He would approach random people and tell them about how his daughter was going to Carney Hall. And, no, it was amazing. I actually, I teared up at that moment when everybody stood up and we got our final applause. It was truly something to work for every year, and I look forward to it going, I think, the day after graduation, I'm going back.
So that's Scholastics. We also had another big event this year. We had the Foxborough Street Painting Festival, which happened on May 2nd at Patriot Place. And a little bit of a background on this one. Last year, in around October, we took a group of arts and culture club members to the Providence Street Painting Festival. I don't know if you remember, Ms. Policy, you know, had come in and talked about it last year. She invited us down. And the students had an amazing time, and we were looking so forward to doing it again this year, except for we found out that they weren't going to have one this year. So literally, about four students approached us in September, saying, you know, "When's the Street Painting Festival? When are we going to have it? When's it going to be?" And we felt just like so broken-hearted that we weren't going to have it, and we missed that opportunity. So in talking to the students and the other teachers, we thought, you know, "Foxborough is such an incredible community, and we have so many amazing artists here. Why don't we just see if we can host one here?" So at that time, I had talked to Superintendent Debbie Spinelli, who had told me that there was an interested business in the area who wanted to possibly do a community art event. And I met, we met with Dr. Lang and the Foxborough Dental Associates and Dr. Barrows in October. We proposed doing the Street Painting Festival here in Foxborough. That was in October. And then from there, we got in contact with Diana Griffin from Patriot Place, the Director of Marketing at Patriot Place. She was all about it, because she had seen pictures from this from last year, and it just, it skyrocketed from there. So once we had the okay and the incredible support from our sponsors, the next step was, okay, well, how do we start this event if this is the first annual event and something that we want to continue on? So we went into branding. This is all part of our Senior Ink class, which is like an in-house craft design team. So these logos for the Foxborough Street Painting Festival that you see on the signs and you saw it on the digital board, these are actually Amber's logo for the event. So Amber designed the logo for it.
Terrific.
So this is just, again, coming up for the brand for this new event. And then the next step was to market the event. So this definitely couldn't have been done without Brianna and Lindsay Coniff, who is at the Black and White Dance right now, but we're definitely going to give her credit. Brianna and Lindsay worked countless hours as part of our senior project, just to make sure that this event took off and it was as strong as it was. So they would go down to Patriot Place, they would meet with Diana Griffin, they would go and deliver all the posters to the local businesses, they did a huge mailing to local schools just to get participation for the event.
That's great.
At the event, we had four different categories that artists could enter. Another reason why we wanted to do this here is because, again, we have so many great artists in the area, but not a lot of collaborations between the schools and with the Foxborough Artist Association, who are also amazing. So this is an opportunity to grab artists from all different ages. So one of the categories was K through 4. And this is all in Patriot Place. And Patriot Place was so wonderful, it, literally, they let us have the sidewalks going all through the stores, taking up all of Patriot Place. So the artists would register for $25 to get a square, and they received a box of pastels for their square, and they could go and they could get more pastels. And the weather was beautiful that day.
Ideal.
Yeah, absolutely ideal.
It was beautiful. It was an amazing event. It was so much fun.
What would have happened if it had rained with snow?
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, this is so incredible. You're going to want to do it again another year.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
This is our fifth and sixth, fifth through eighth grade artists, some middle-school artists. And the other great thing is because of Brianna and Lindsay and all the people they sent the applications to, we got different schools, so what other towns do we have?
We got Walpole, I think. There were three girls from Walpole who ended up winning a pretty big prize, so that was really cool. And I'm not sure where else.
I think North Attleboro, Norton, there's Providence.
Mm-hmm. There were people from all around.
Franklin.
It was a theme, right? Like, it's escaping me now.
Yep. So, yeah, so you could either do whatever design you wanted to do, or like this person here, whose father is in...
Behind me?
Mm-hmm. Who's also an award winner. The theme was "Where Smiles Come Alive." So whatever your interpretation of "Where Smiles Come Alive."
It was really neat to see the different artists' interpretation of that.
Mm-hmm. Like this one. This was an Instagram photo that she had the tooth in the corner. And this is one of the students that Brianna was talking about, from Walpole.
And I believe an adult also drew something up there that day.
Yes.
I was just hoping that that would pop up on the screen.
No. Yeah, my husband was involved in one of the drawings. This is Brianna. So Brianna was not only part of our planning and running around that day, but she also did her own drawing.
Well, she had to have something fun.
Sophia. This was cute, because she did, you know, Centuri Grease, and there are people who would walk by and say, "Oh, that's where we had our honeymoon," and just take a picture in front of it, because it reminded them of something.
It looked just like it.
And then the final category was adults, so 19-plus, because we had a lot of alumni who go to art schools, and we thought, you know, this would be really good to get them involved. This is one of the artists who's part of the Foxborough Art Association, so she purchased a square. And this is Kira Halberg, who is one of our alumni. And there's Kira. So Kira got first place for the theme "Where Smiles Come Alive." And Kira is now going to UMass Dartmouth. The, so there was the theme. There was also a people's choice, and one thing to say about the people's choice is, you know, Brianna and Lindsay worked hard coming up with this idea of a people's choice and put in buckets by each of the squares, so people could vote on their favorites. All the proceeds for that went to a second scholarship. So tomorrow night, during the presentation of the scholarships by the town, there's going to be two Foxborough Art Association scholarships because of this. And we were very fortunate to have Pat Patriot come and help us out. So while this event was going on, another thing that made it so special is the Foxborough Art Association. They're amazing, and the art studio and gallery, and they had a paint out that happened simultaneously with the street painting event. So the paint out is they invite their own artists to come, and they literally sit outside and they do paintings and drawings, so you can watch them in their process.
There was such an excellent vibe up there that day. It was just a really special day, and you could feel the excitement walking around Patriot Place.
Absolutely.
Your hard work is very appreciable.
And this is what we talked about with the gallery. So at the same time, we had the AP work shown in the gallery. This is our crew. So all this couldn't have happened without our sponsors, Patriot Place and Foxborough Dental Associates. They were huge, and literally, you know, we had this little tiny idea, and without them, this wouldn't have happened, so it's a huge thank you to them. And then also, we had guest judges, so Dwight Darian, the Creative, the Director of Creative Services for New England Patriots, Frank Quinn and his wife, Joanne Quinn, from the Foxborough Art Association. They went around and judged every single square. They took their time. They were very thoughtful in the judging. We had Sasha Greenhall, who was another alumni, who came and did all the photography for us. And then all the students and the teachers that were there from about 8:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night, just working and making sure that everything went smoothly. And it was an incredible event, and I heard a lot of people say they really want to do it again next year, so we're pushing to make this a tradition. That's our dream, to make this a tradition in Foxborough. So we do have a couple of social media networks where people can follow us, through Twitter, Facebook, and then also there is a website.
You would never know that was the first time you'd ever done it. It was so well-done, the whole event, such a beautiful day. It was outstanding.
Couldn't have done it without this one, Lindsay. They, they were amazing. They, they were amazing.
Comments from the committee?
I can't say enough about Kelly Akasha and, and the art department. Um, I mean, the art tutel is just all happening. We have, oh, we have, you've done amazing things. And that day was phenomenal. I worked in there for a long time and I've never seen the whole place covered by one event. The weather was spectacular.
Yeah, we were very lucky.
But I've never seen the whole, one event going from one end, extreme one end to the other end, all the way up to the hotel. And it was just, it was phenomenal and the, you could feel the excitement in the air. It was just, it was unbelievable.
I hope you can do it again. I can't wait to go back.
I do too. I do too. Yeah, we had about twenty-two, we were saying, twenty-two artists. And we're hoping to get even more next year.
That's great, yeah.
I thought your comment, um, about your father and ordinary people was beautiful and really well expressed. And I think that not just, you know, media to paper or cement or whatever it is, uh, an ability to express what's in your skull on paper to the world is really important with words. And, uh, it's good to see you learning and exhibiting, um, a beautiful way of saying things. Thank you. That, that hit me right there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just before we go, I, I would love to hear a little bit more about the AP class because it was very exciting when you brought it forward for approval. And so I'd like to hear how many kids were in it.
And we have an AP prospect for next year, so that was here.
Is she looking at you, baby?
Now, my talents lie other, in other areas.
Um, AP art, you would expect it to be kind of an easier course, something where you can, you know, take a couple hours, work on an art piece and you think, you know, you could bust it right out. But, um, unfortunately, the thing with art is that in order for it to actually be an AP quality piece, the time will show. And it's not like you can go and you can write out a paper for your AP history class in an hour, whereas an AP art piece will take up to five, maybe eight, sometimes weeks. And to be able to produce twenty-four pieces in just a short amount of months is definitely a challenge and I wish Melissa luck next year.
Not to discourage you.
I'm a little nervous.
But this year, um, the, uh, AP art students are expected to do a few pieces over the summer, which I do believe will help with the workload.
That'll be a good experience for Rizdi because you will not be sleeping.
That's what I've heard. I've heard some horror stories.
You do not sleep.
I just think it's so impressive, you're both going to really competitive art schools.
Thank you.
And so congratulations to both of you. That's quite an achievement right there.
Maybe I'll just wrap up by saying, uh, sixteen students winning awards, twenty-seven awards, five portfolio winners versus one or two typically, I think you said, Kelly. It's a banner year for the art program. Capped off by the, uh, the, uh, Street Painting Festival. You guys did a great job. So students, congratulations and, uh, Kelly, fantastic work.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's definitely the team of teachers and the town that supports us. It's phenomenal, thank you.
It's awesome. Thank you. Thanks for coming and sharing the story.
Thank you.
As they leave, I'll say one thing you've heard me say many, many times, but I hope I never get sick of hearing myself say it. There are many ways to be brilliant. And when people like you are here, that's what I say. I say to myself again, here's another way to be brilliant. There's not just one way to be brilliant. So many ways, so.
Maybe we should applaud these ladies.
Congratulations and we'll probably see you, uh, at least a couple of times this week.
All right, Mr. McCabe and his team of students.
Yes, come on up, Mr. McCabe. And I'm glad you have four students with you. So to give you a little idea, this is a brand new adventure for the high school. And as you know, as a committee, uh, you stand for this and as a community, we stand for this, that we're always looking for new and exciting ways to expand what we offer students, whether it be through courses, clubs, activities, whatever it is, to help students find something they really are passionate about or want to pursue. So when Mr. McCabe said he wanted to do DECA, I've had some knowledge of DECA in the past in another district. I think Amy has as well and Mrs. Mize Paklata. So we all just went, this is great. Of course, DECA is a lot of work and we don't have to do it. So we're just going to turn it over to the, to Mr. McCabe and the student leaders who are coming forward with this new program till, so we can learn all about it. Yes, so just take that and sort of turn it to face whoever is speaking.
Well, first off, I just want to, um, compliment the students because they're the ones that brought it forward to me and asked me if I would be the advisor and I would help them get a start. And I said, sure, let's do it. And, um, I especially want to thank Mackenzie because, I mean, she just ran with it and first meeting, we had over fifty kids show up. So I was just like, wow. Because I tried about eight years ago to start one and I think we had like ten kids. And it, it was different back then because you had to be enrolled currently in a marketing class to participate. So it was more restrictive, but, uh, I was just overwhelmed. And we've already done so many things already, like as far as getting fundraisers going, things like that. So, uh, I'm just trying to keep up with them, actually. So, um, I guess, yeah, I know, exactly.
John, are you going to define what it is for those who don't know?
Yes, sure. And actually, I'm learning every day what it is too, myself. So, uh, it used to be referred to as the Distributive Education Clubs of America. They actually don't go by that any longer because they are more than that now, I guess you'd say. Uh, they're not just in America and they're international. And they're also, um, it's not just what used to be distributed education, which essentially was sort of like, um, it started off in colleges and it was more of sort of like, almost like training a sales force kind of thing, like getting people interested in, in sales and all that stuff and educating them about what that is and how that works. Uh, but now it is so many other things, as you can see in that packet, as far as just the various competitions that they offer. So essentially, there's, there's five main fields. Marketing being the biggest probably, um, entrepreneurship, business management, administration, finance and hospitality and tourism. So, I mean, the, the, the main thing is the competitive events. That's the, that's their big thing, I bet, I guess. And, um, basically, students can, can, um, enroll or sign up to be in a competition. And there's essentially three levels. There's a district level, a state level, and what they call international level, which is basically nationals in the US. And they qualify, if they make it, if they get a certain score, they get in a certain percentage of, um, students in the district level, then they can move on to the state and then they can move on to the national if they make the next qualifying round. So I guess the main thing is, is what we're here tonight for anyways, is to basically let you guys know about DECA and what it is and where, that we're starting this activity and that there's the possibility of overnight travel in the future and, you know, in the springtime, um, late, late winter, early spring, things like that. And as far as, um, as far as DECA, it, it's just, as I learned more about it, it's just amazing how much it does align with what's currently going on. Um, Twenty First Century Skills, Common Core. I mean, it is, uh, definitely an authentic, hands-on, uh, assessment of what the students know and can learn and can, and can show what they, you know, what they're capable of doing. Um, so it really does, you know, match up very well with what's going on in education today. I guess the last thing I want to say before I got to kind of let them speak is, um, there are different ways to do it. In some schools, it's an all-encompassing, comprehensive program where the actual, like, classes they run are essentially like DECA preparation. They're, you're, they're essentially educating the students and getting them ready for competition as their assessments, essentially. Um, I see it as of right now as being more extracurricular, at least next year, just so we can see kind of how things go. And then maybe in the future, we can add it more into the actual curriculum in the, in terms of the classes. But that's sort of where we are right now. And if you have any other unanswered questions?
We may, we may have some.
I know I do, but.
Mackenzie and the team.
Why don't we have each student introduce yourself? And tell us what grade you're in and what, what, what drove you to nudge us?
I'm Austin Ryan and I'm the Vice President. And what drove me to take it to you guys is we recently visited Wareham High School to, um, sort of get introduced to the program by a pretty prominent program itself, as it has, I think they said, two hundred fifty-three members. And going to that school was actually incredible because they had members, and it's not only the smart kids. They said that, for the most part, the kids who str- who strived in this program are kids who are better with hands-on and, like, actual real-world learning. And there is stories as, such as kids getting ninety-one thousand dollars in scholarships. There was actually a kid who got a full-time job at a bank because of his presentation at a competition. And we really think that it's a very effective way to get kids who aren't so much into the school learning to sort of come to their own and express themselves in a way that can be effective into getting to college and just have an overall positive effect.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Anderson. Um, I'm the present president and kind of founder of DECA. At the beginning of the year, I had Mr. McCabe for the first time and I brought to him the idea of DECA. I had talked to my friend from OA about his experience with DECA and how much he loved it and how like, he felt it really pushed him not only in the classroom, but to be able to get into the next level college. And I just thought that was so amazing. And he told me all these stories about competitions and how much he learned and the new people that he met throughout, not only different states, but like the country that he still kept in contact with and the new contacts that he's made, not only with students, but like businesses. And I just thought that was amazing. So I asked Mr. McCabe if we could start it up and he's like, "Well, I only had ten people sign up like three years ago." And I was like, "I'll make it happen." So I was just so happy. I was just so happy when fifty people showed up the first day. Like, I made a short list of like, like, maybe you'll have like twelve sections of people, like, so they can write their names. And we ended up getting like four more pieces of paper and just throwing them around. And I was like, "Just sign your name, I don't care, just write whatever." So it was a huge success and I hope that next year we do super well at competitions and I just can't wait to see what's to come.
That's terrific.
Hi, my name's Courtney Sealy and I'm the secretary. As soon as Mackenzie brought up DECA to me, it just sounded like a great experience. It would give you life experience that you needed to get out into the real world and exceed. And it gave you, like, all these different things that could be really useful for life and education furthermore. So, um, when I'm, when we took the attendance now, we have about seventy kids already enrolled and that's before we even have, have even really began that many preparations for the, for the competitions and everything. Like, we just started and we already have such a great outcome. So it just seems like it'd be the perfect opportunity for everyone to exceed and do well in things that would really matter and really, really help the students out with their lives and to do well in their careers throughout their lives.
Um, I'm Dylan Elfman. I'm the treasurer of DECA. And what really drew me, um, to the program was that it put kid, puts kids in real-life situations, not just learning with like a pen and paper. And you can really expand upon your knowledge of subjects by getting thrown into it and writing reports for like financial statements and like, um, it, there are situations where you're supposed to role-play and it'll put you in a situation where you have to pretend you're a clerk at a hotel and a customer has a complaint and you have to, uh, like, calm down the situation yourself. And, um, like, I don't know.
It's just like class, we'll come back to you. When, when you remember what it was, just go like, "Gotcha." You know, you're doing me a favor too because, um, we've been talking a lot about, we want to provide more experiences for students in global connectivity. And this is an international program. So you will learn a lot more about, um, and compete with international, you know, on an international level in, with other students who are interested in entrepreneurship, marketing, finance, hospitality, management, business-type things and, and hopefully find your niche in that area. So it's, it's definitely something that we don't provide a lot of opportunity here. If your passion is in that, to find your niche there. But it's also another example of, of global, a global educational experience. So you should make it easy. I can like add another thing to our list and say, "Well, there's another thing we do for, for global experience." So, but you're doing it for me, so how does it get better than that?
And it's fun, so.
Can you tell me, DECA stands for what again?
Well, it used to be, it used to stand for Distributive Education Clubs of America. But they don't really use that anymore at all. It's, you, you, if you look on their website, it's never mentioned. It's just DECA, DECA, it's just always DECA now. Uh, because I think they've gone beyond that. But they didn't want to change, you know, try to re- revamp themselves as, as a name. But, uh, that's what it, what it did stand for originally, yes.
And am I right in thinking this is a kind of a business-focused finance, marketing? Or, or am I thinking too simplistically?
No.
No, that's essentially what it is.
I, I, when people ask me, what is it? I, I say, think of like, um, debate team as in a business setting or, you know, mock trial in a business setting. Got those kind of, like, clubs type things. It's sort of.
So is that what drew you guys? Was maybe an interest in finance or marketing or business or, or not necessarily?
Yeah, well, I really, sorry. I've always aspired to go to college and have a business major. So when my friend Colin did bring this up, I was like, "Oh, that's even better. Like, I can basically start now." So, um, it was just another way for me to get like the edge on other schools and like, be like, "I already know this about marketing, I already know this about finance." It's just another way to up your resume and up your knowledge.
It's a great story because we are very interested in making sure that we're providing for you guys and the students of Foxborough some real-world type things, beyond the traditional academics, which of course you have to have. So it's really great that you helped bring this here. Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fabulous. I love that Mackenzie took the initiative and went to Mr. McCabe. And I really liked what Austin had to say about it appealing to students at all different levels who might not, you know, enjoy the books so much, but want to get some hands-on experience. I mean, it's just like what you said about there are different ways to be brilliant and this is another perfect example of that. So thank you all. I can't wait to hear you come back and ask us for overnight travel for the nationals next year.
We'll say yes.
I think Steve had a comment and then Dr. Burdos.
Well, just, Mackenzie, don't worry, you'll break out of your shyness sometime.
I get that a lot.
But, uh, there were two things and, and I, and I was reading about DECA uh, and, and, and saw a couple of things that were of great interest to, to me, uh, as, as part of the whole. And one is, um, it's component of community service as well as, um, uh, what Dylan was saying was the importance of immersion in real-world situations. That, that's it. Because, Austin, to your, to your and Courtney's point, being seen is one of the best advice, pieces of advice I've ever got in, in, in my career, for whatever, for its worth. Um, but be seen and matter, right? And do well and be kind. And thi- this just oozes the opportunity to do that and use your, your skill sets and superpowers that you have with your personalities and your interests and those sorts of things. So, you know, run like heck with it. And, uh, I think it sounds like a great program for you. And the community service component, I'd really like to see what you do because they help the Mass Muscular Dystrophy Association as well. That's their, their favored charity, I think. So it'll be interesting to see what is, bears fruit from what, what you students are going to come up with.
Amy?
I just, from experience in a, in another district with students, all of this plays out. And it really watches students grow over time and seeing some that may be shy to begin with, to really come out of their shell. You really see a difference over time, being much more able to speak publicly or think on their feet very quickly with the role-playing that you were talking about. It really does give some great opportunities that allow you to do things that are not necessarily things that you're doing in a classroom.
I think your fifth officer just arrived.
Yep. Hi, I'm so sorry.
Oh, it's, oh, good.
Okay, I'm Ally Curran and I'm the publicity coordinator for DECA.
So we just asked, um, your, your friends to say, what, what made you come forward to really take the initiative for the students to push us to support you in this?
Well, um, Mackenzie is my close friend and I definitely wanted to support her. And, um, I really wanted to get involved in like a big club at the Fox, at the high school. So I figured I might as well try. And, uh, I really enjoy like graphic design and stuff. So I figured, uh, this would be a good fit.
Publicity.
With my friends, so.
This is going to be a big club.
It's already huge.
So that, that alone will be a great learning experience for, for them to sort of wrestle all these people into being productive and moving forward.
Every meeting, it's just all yelling.
I'm surprised by the enthusiasm and, and most kids don't even have a clue as, as to what the whole thing is yet. And they're always like, "Let's go, let's do it."
You're like, "So what is DECA? I love DECA." What, do you know what you love yet? Because you don't even know what the club is.
But they're so, yeah, it's great.
Ride the mojo as long as you can, you know? Ally, I really like what you just said. Because you didn't say, "Oh, I really want to be a marketing or a finance or a business person." You said, "I wanted to support a friend and I wanted to get involved." or a finance or a business person." You said, "I wanted to support a friend and I wanted to get involved at Foxborough High." You know what? I think that probably happens with a lot of kids where they don't know what they want to do, but they're willing to jump in into something and good for you.
Thank you.
How many of you are seniors?
Well, they're going to be.
Going to be. So I was afraid you would set this up and then you're going to like dump it on somebody or.
Austin, Dylan and I are going into our senior year and um, Courtney and Ally are both going into their junior year.
All right, so.
And are you a senior?
Seems to be a succession plan.
Yes.
They are now, Bill.
They consider themselves that now.
Yeah, okay.
The seats left, they consider themselves seniors, right?
So we've got a team that you can, that can help you, Mr. McCabe.
Definitely, yes.
This, this is going to be big because it, having experienced with it, it's, it's not only exciting and interesting and competitive, which you know, competition's always interest, always exciting too. But it, it's also so practical and they, they can already see this, this is going to lead to careers and jobs and companies. And it doesn't take long to see that. So I think that's great. I also want to give Mr. McCabe a little shout-out here because, you know, because obviously the kid's energy drives us to say, "Yes, let's, we can do this, let's do it." But um, even, I mean, even speaking from personal experience as, as a parent, the course, the elective courses he teaches sometimes can really be the most exciting part of the day. And, and he teaches all of the business classes, but any, a variety. Almost you can't repeat anything twice because you do everything, you know, differently. So he preps for five different courses every semester. But those are sometimes the classes that really inspire people and, and, and kids to do different things. So I want to make sure you're not just sitting quietly like, you know, helping. Because I, sometimes we don't think of the elective program that way, but his elective program does exactly that, right?
Yeah. I just have one more thing to say. Um, in regards, in props to Mr. McCabe, I think that half the reason we had the success that we did is because of him. Like the reason that some of these kids come to the club is because they love him so much as a teacher. And he just drives everyone to want to push themselves and just having him there just brings everyone's energy up. I remember the first meeting, everyone was like, "McCabe, McCabe." And we all walked in and they're like, "DECA, let's go to internationals." I'm like, "Okay." So I just want to give him some props because he's just motivated me to want to make this club as big as it can be.
I can't walk down the hall by Mr. McCabe's room without hearing someone yelling, "McCabe, yeah, McCabe." Every day.
I believe I may have heard that several years ago in my household. Yeah, so it was, it's so, wanted to make sure you didn't just say, "I'll, I agree to be the advisor" because he's very humble. So I wanted to, you know, put him on the spot a little bit.
Just along similar lines, you know, I've talked to Mr. McCabe about the school store. And you know, the, I, I remember the school store 30-plus years ago when I was in school. And I know the school store is kind of going, it's, I don't know if it's dying a slow death, but it certainly is perhaps a little, a little outdated, right, Mr. McCabe? I'm, I'm happy to see some energy brought.
Yes, I'm hoping that with this DECA program, we're going to kind of revamp things and go in a different direction. Cause given the, you know, the guidelines with food and whatnot, it's just, it's, it has changed a lot and it's not really viable the way it currently exists, I guess. So. But I think with this, I think there are opportunities. Cause a lot of things involved with DECA are things like you can do things through a school store and um, you know, create marketing plans and market products and things like that. So.
So I'm kind of excited for you.
Yeah.
School Store 2.0.
Um, and to speak on behalf of the school store, actually when we visited Wareham, um, they started out trying to raise money for the DECA program because there's traveling and stuff involved. And it's a lot of money to take a plane to, for example, Atlanta for our Nationals last year. And they actually, I imagine you guys have heard of the Cape Cod baseball league. Their concessions for their local team actually runs through DECA. And that brings some of, the advisor there said, an estimated about $10,000 a year, which they put into scholarships into the program. And it all started through the school store, through concessions. And the kids, and the advisor said she had nothing to do with it. The kids call Coca-Cola, they order all the food and they bring everything there and it's all run through them. And it all started up through DECA. Through one person's idea that they presented, the company liked. So everything runs through that. So hopefully we can get something.
Actually, there's a role we could all play, which is try to seek out and connect them with potential, potential business sponsors. DECA.
They're even starting a, um, a bank. They're starting like a small bank inside of the, one of the school stores at Wareham. So the students can access the bank, open a student account and they can access the ATM during the day. They can set it all up so that it can run with their lunches and like, they can pay with their lunches by stopping at the bank. It's, it's incredible. They're just starting that now. Interesting.
Well, I know we don't have to do an official vote to make DECA an extracurricular, but how many board members want to see DECA be an extracurricular next year?
I'm going to rate two hands.
All right, seven hands.
Out of five people.
Joe's giving us two more back there.
Tell him good day, Sunday comes from the school store next year, please.
Yeah, see, well, what he's saying is that contributed to the demise of the school store and we couldn't sell the illegal sweets, food, once the, once the federal nutrition regulations came in a few years ago, you know, that shocked us all. They can't sell the stuff that kids could go buy there that's um, nutritiously unsound, but we love them.
I think Steve, Steve has one more comment.
Just a, a thought. I smell a powerhouse here. Uh, I think, I really do. I think this thing's going to be big. And, and maybe you want to keep this in mind. There, there might be other groups within the school that need to raise funds that you could cross-pollinate with to help the weaker fundraising organizations that are as important as DECA to those in them. And see if there's imaginative ways your brain trust can help the other brain trusts across the FHS, you know, student body.
You mean, once they accumulate their secret stash?
Right. Well, once, you know, once your powerhouse is built. But I, I think there's a lot, there's a lot here to be seen already in enthusiasm. So just keep that in mind.
I actually think there is a vote the school committee will have to take though. If you're going to do fundraising and it's going to go into the student activity account, you have to vote to open up that, access the student activity account for DECA.
A lot of, we have, any extra club or activity does that. Almost every club or activity fundraises.
Under the laws now, you are supposed to vote for which clubs can do that.
Do you want us to do that now or do you want to come to us with?
Maybe, maybe we should take under consideration, before we do that, all of the clubs that would need.
All the other ones are, are already in existence. It's the, the law basically went into effect and said, "Any new clubs that come forward need to be basically certified by the school committee." That that would be an ongoing.
Beautiful.
Does it have to have a plan set up before we make such a vote or we just have to?
It's strictly allowing the club to accumulate uh, money.
Funds.
When we were at Wareham, they, uh, Ms. Sylvia's sister, who helps run the DECA program, she suggested that uh, we could combine forces with like, say, the art program or all their different clubs. And like they could uh, make posters for us or um, I don't know, create different um, campaign designs and stuff. Uh, just so we can incorporate them as well in it. And then also kind of give them a little like, "Oh, hey, check out Art and Culture Club" or something to that extent and like, incorporate the rest of the people in the school. Or like if we have a fundraiser, we could involve the music kids and be like, "Oh, can you play with us?" Like at an event and like we can just get everyone involved. It'd be great.
Wow.
So should we entertain a motion to uh, allow DECA to uh, do their fundraising within the proper guidelines of the extracurricular?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Bill, how do you want us to wordsmith that? Just to make sure it's right?
Basically, it's underneath the student activity account that you're approving DECA uh, to do fundraising um, into the account.
Approve DECA as a high school club with all of the rights and privileges for fundraising and maintaining uh, student account.
Okay. Did you make the motion, Bevy?
I did.
Are you okay with that wording?
Oh, yes. I think the, the wording should be done by somebody who understands.
All right.
The law. I mean, I understand it, but I don't, he's read it, I haven't. So he would reflect better.
I would say.
The intent.
Approve DECA as an FHS club with all the rights and privileges to fundraise and maintain a student account.
Thank you. That's okay, Bevy?
That's perfect.
Did someone second?
I seconded it and I'm fine with that as well.
All in favor? Congratulations, you guys. Go forward.
Excellent.
We can't wait.
Thank you very much.
Exciting. Can't wait.
You guys did great.
Yes, you really did.
Sorry I'm late.
No, very impressive. Go to it.
We're having too much fun to do real work. We should just.
That was real work.
Thanks, Joan.
I like that kind of work.
As we change gears, I just sit, listening to them praise their teacher and their teacher praise them. It's really why we are here at this table. I mean, this is why we do what we do. It's very exciting stuff.
That made my day. But my son, I don't know, he took his business law class and he's a lawyer. But he was so passionate about that elective class. It just really got him.
How long has Mr. McCabe been here roughly?
Um, no, long enough to have had my son, who's age 30. Let's see. So I'm going to, I'm going to say um, well, at least 15 years.
Is that right?
It has to be at least 15, probably 16 to 17.
Well, that was a nice, uh, nice tribute to him by those kids.
Long enough to still be young and energetic and to be an awesome experienced teacher.
If he can make business law exciting, he can really teach. Cause that's not an exciting area of law.
I know, but you know how much I heard about that?
I hear ya. That's great. It's the mark of a good teacher.
Okay, so we have a school nurse appointment.
Yes. So um, just to remind the committee, the, as part of the um, Massachusetts regulations around school committees, the school committee appoints the expected positions. I think the public are under sandwich is a superintendent. You appoint the assistant superintendent. You appoint the director of special education and you appoint school nurses. It is the, the one um, position in a public school system that, you know, they're members of the professionals association along with teachers and therapists and specialists. So it, it is, I don't want to call it an oddity because it's the law. I don't want to say anything about the, the law as an oddity. But it is um, something different in that typically new appointments, you know, don't come here for a public interview. So um, what we've always done in Foxborough, it is a school committee appointment, is that the, the school hiring the school nurse, um, screens and interviews the school nurse, makes a recommendation to me. I meet with the, the final candidates for all positions. But at this point, I have met with this final candidate. At this point, um, until you appoint the person, um, we can't hire the school nurse. So I will tell you a little bit about the school nurse who is being recommended to you for the full-time position at the Ahern School. Um, I can't be a surprise at this point. In two weeks from now, we're going to be celebrating it here at this table anyway. Um, but Mrs. Judy Sheehan, who's been the longtime school nurse at the middle school, is retiring. So this is for her full-time school nurse replacement. So the candidate that uh, we are all recommending to you is Jennifer Rosenberg, who lives in North Attleboro and she has been a district school nurse working a couple of days a week um, as part of that team. And um, and has been a substitute school nurse, a parent volunteer. She's volunteered um, with the American Stroke Association, American Cancer Society. Uh, she has taught at a community college for, for a year back then. She's worked at a, at the Bay State Medical Center, um, back when she first became a nurse and at the Memorial Hospital of Rhode Island. So she's got a variety of experience and enthusiastically recommend her for the full-time nursing position at the Ahern Middle School.
B.C. grad?
Yes, Boston College.
Yeah, a lot of licenses and certifications.
Bachelor, uh, a bachelor's degree in nursing from Boston College.
Well, I'm certainly not a nursing expert, but I always like to see, you know, real-world application, which she did for um, a number of years in Memorial Hospital of Rhode Island, as you mentioned, and Bay State Medical Center and then taught, as you said, and then has been a school nurse before. This isn't her first, first ride on that merry-go-round, so.
And I do think that's important because nursing, nursing's nursing, but nursing in a school setting can, can be a little bit different with all pediatric clients, as we will, and on a daily basis. So I think that's important.
I mean, her skills listed too, not just licenses and certifications.
Yes.
They're priority ones.
Tina?
I, I was just curious. I, I know it does say um, the initial D-E-S-E licens, licensure application is currently under review. Is that a formality, the process?
Yes, I mean, most, most, um, she is a licensed nurse, as you can imagine. So the nurses and uh, speech and language pathologists, for example, have to maintain two certifications. One with their professional organization, just to be licensed as a nurse. And then with the Department of Ed if you want to work in a school setting. So not unlike therapists and specialists, she has, she has to have two different certifications. So she has applied for her school certification with the Department of Education. I think by the time school opens, she will have it. So it is pending. So her hiring, which could occur tomorrow morning, if you were to take a favorable, favorable vote, would certainly be um, you know, uh, as a long-term substitute pending the um, attainment of the certification, which is what we did the last time, which was about three years ago. So yes, that's, thank you for asking about that.
Thank you for clarifying.
But she was very impressive, I just have to say.
Any other comments?
Is the salary commensurate with what we have in our regular salary structure?
The nurses are part of the professionals association. So they are in the same contract with teachers, therapists, specialists. So she would be um, appointed uh, on that salary scale.
Okay, thank you. I'd, do we nominate, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Rosenberg.
Make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to nominate uh, Ms. Rosenberg uh, for the school nurse at the Ahern.
I'll second that.
As recommended by the administration.
And I'm just going to, friendly amendments, a motion to approve. Is that okay?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Any further discussion?
Should it be motion to appoint? I'm sorry.
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint.
Sorry, first.
No, that's even better.
Motion to appoint Jennifer Rosenberg as nurse for the uh, school.
All right, we got first and a second.
As recommended by the administration.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work to those who helped identify and locate Jennifer. We will congratulate our retiree and.
Yes, it's time, yes.
How many retirees do we have about now? Do we know? Is it 11? 11?
11.
Across the district.
Right, that's what I meant, across the district.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, we have three, uh, three policies for first reading. Field trips, late-night and overnight student travel and graduation requirements, right?
Yes.
I'm not saying a word because we have a policy subcommittee that is way ahead of me. So I'm just going to turn it over to our marvelous policy subcommittee.
And you know, I just want to say, we really try to work well together and it is a delight to work with Tina. And the two of us got up, she went into the, into the office to speak with Janet first and then I followed. We, you just have to keep going back and going back and use as many eyes as possible. And we said, "Oh my gosh, Tina, see, I think we overlooked this." So we finished one more thing. So if any of you with your sets of eyes find one more before we do the final.
You initiated this, is that right?
There were a couple of things. Debbie, Debbie asked us to take a look at the field trips.
First one on field trips, I did.
Great.
And left them, basically just left them a note because they can.
And one thing led to another, led to another? Is that how?
Well, when we looked at field trips, we decided we should look at the late-night and overnight student travel and make sure that the two policies kind of go hand in glove. And so we wanted to make sure they um, were consistent. So we made a couple of minor changes. And then just in browsing through the policy manual, I noticed that um, our graduation requirements were not up to date to some of the changes that this committee has made over the last couple of years. So just to be very um, persnickety.
And accurate. Appropriately accurate.
So uh, we've made a couple of changes there.
And we already know because of the, the wheel that's been set into motion, by 2016, something's going to happen and by 2017, something's going to happen. So why not note that now? Because it's, it's already in the pipeline.
Well, I think their timing on that second one, the graduation, is good. Because if you had done it before this, then you're basically writing policy that did not apply to this year's graduating class.
Sure.
So now is the time to say what's going to happen in the next couple of years as the graduation requirements shift a little bit.
Exactly. So we have to do a first reading.
And you flipped a coin and I bet Tina lost.
Oh, I did.
These are short.
I have been on the policy committee since 2004.
She's done her share.
No, and believe you me, it is a great pleasure for me to watch, watch Tina express her passion. I mean, this is her passion.
Well, thank you.
This is my duty.
What I just heard you say, what I just heard you say is the junior member gets to read the policies. Is that what, just, all right, Tina?
I think the expert in policy gets to read.
I don't know if I'm an expert, but let's uh.
Well, you're getting there quickly.
This is, the first is.
You're on the road.
Okay. The first is field trips and it's file IJOA. The Foxborough School Committee recognizes that firsthand learning experiences provided by field trips are a most effective and worthwhile means of learning. It is the desire of the committee to encourage field trips as part of and directly related to the school program and curriculum. Specific guidelines and appropriate procedures shall be, shall be developed to screen, approve and evaluate trips and to ensure that all reasonable steps are taken for the learning and safety of the participants. There was, that we dropped an R there. So we're adding an R. So it's not the leaning, it's the learning. That's a correct spelling. The learning and safety of the participants. The learning and safety of the participants. Said guidelines and procedures should be developed by the administration and reviewed and approved by the Foxborough School Committee. These guidelines and appropriate administrative procedures shall ensure that all field trips have the approval of the principal, and that all overnight trips have the prior approval of the Foxborough School Committee. Field trips can bring the school and the community closer together, which can result in real-life experiences that enrich the curriculum for students and also bring about better public relations. The Foxborough School Committee will also encourage field trips as an integral part of the instructional programs in the schools. The superintendent will establish, establish regulations to assure that, one, all students have parental permission for trips. Two, all trips are properly supervised. Three, all safety precautions are observed. Four, all trips contribute substantially to the educational program. All overnight trips must have advanced approval of the Foxborough School Committee. Fundraising activities for such trips will be subject to approval by the Foxborough School Committee. Policy adopted 32408. So we struck the language out of state for extended overnight trips and excursions, um, because we do have field trips, you know, that are day trips to Rhode Island that we feel that we do not need to approve the Exchange City trip or trips to United Skates in Pawtucket. Those go through the principal, so we, this is strictly overnight trips that will be for our approval.
Yes, Joe.
What about trips to Freedom Trail or Kennedy Lake or Kinbill Farms?
They don't need.
If they're not overnight, just field trips.
Then they're not overnight.
Okay, what about like DC in Tennessee?
Yes, those we would have to approve, absolutely.
What if you go in for the day, like it's a late night?
Nope. If you're gonna be sleeping overnight somewhere, I'm not overnight.
DC, right?
Yes, like you didn't say.
Any questions on that one? Seems, uh, straightforward. Yep, okay.
So, to be consistent, we have filed J J H, and in the, the title, we struck late night and, and it will just say overnight student travel. All student trips which include overnight travel must have the prior approval of the Foxborough School Committee. The Foxborough School Committee shall only cons, shall consider only trips that have been previously approved by the school principal and the superintendent. Um, fundraising activities for such trips will be subject to approval by the Foxborough School Committee. We struck the prior sentence and inserted that sentence because it's consistent with what is in, um, the field trip policy. So we wanted to be consistent. The Foxborough School Committee will also consider the educational value of the trip in relation to the cost prior to granting initial approval. Overnight trips should offer significant educational benefits to students that clearly justify the time and expense of the trip. Such trips should also be appropriate for the grade level. Final approval will not be granted until all the preparations for the trip have been completed, including but not limited to all logistical details involving transportation, accommodation arrangements, adult chaperones, and fundraising efforts. Final approval shall be sought no less than thirty days prior to the scheduled trip dates and properly supervised. Teachers and other school staff are prohibited from soliciting for privately-run trips through the school system and in the schools. The Foxborough School Committee will only review for approval school-sanctioned trips. The Foxborough School Committee will not review or approve trips that are privately organized and run without school sanctioning. Uh, policy adopted 122204, policy amended 11005. Legal references, chapter 346 of the Acts of 2002 at all, approved on 10902, Massachusetts General Law, uh, chapter 69, paragraph 1B, chapter 71, paragraph 37N, and its cross-reference to I J O A field trips. Policy adopted 32408. Any questions on that one?
Joe?
Oh, I wonder, can I, the funniest thing, what my history teacher says about field trips.
Joe, let me ask you a question.
Joe, we're in the middle of really business right now, please.
Joe, does this have to do with the policy that Mrs. Bell?
Oh, field trips, she said that.
No, no, the policy.
Okay.
If you have a question right now, it should deal with the wording that Mrs. Bell.
Field trips, so sometimes, do they always have to be educational?
Yes.
What if they're not, like, say it's the end of the year, I'm wondering, is that allowed?
Well, that's like, well, that's a really good point, actually. Sometimes the end-of-year ones are celebratory in nature, like to help kids celebrate. So I guess educational and celebrating school achievements is, is probably okay.
Well, and there's educational value to socialization and being with your friends and operating, you know, within rules and guidelines.
What about the calculating, learning how to calculate taxes, like when you buy stuff?
Very important.
Two, there you go.
Critically important.
Like, say if you go shopping at a mall, like, say if it's best buddies, is that educational?
Yes.
It is.
In the best way possible.
I'm wondering if that was educational.
Don't you think it's things that kids need to learn how to do?
What about vocational opportunities for K students?
Is that correct?
And how about you tell me that story privately next time we see each other? The funny story.
It was a joke, because.
You can tell me.
Because there's too many days missed at class.
Privately, all right?
Thank you, Joe. Next one.
So are we all set with that one? So the next one is just, uh, is our graduate, it's not just, it is our graduation requirements, file I K F. In order to graduate from Foxborough High School, a student must have earned a minimum of, it will be twenty-four credits as follows, um, change from twenty-two. And remember, these are all graduation requirements we have previously approved, and they're recorded currently in our Foxborough High School student handbook. This is just to make the two match.
Sounds appropriate.
Yes. So, and I apologize for not catching it sooner, but it is what it is. We're catching it now.
I would like to apologize for not catching it sooner, too. So, but I, that's why I have a policy subcommittee, that's what I'm going with.
We'll stay on top of this one. So English, four credits, science, one of which must be a laboratory science, three credits. Social studies, one of which must be a United States history. Janet, can we put another parentheses on the end of that? We didn't there, but just to be persnickety. Three credits, mathematics, four, will change from three credits to four credits. There is an asterisk there that says, we'll go down and say, beginning with the class of 2017, four credits will be required in mathematics.
So can I ask a clarifying question while you're reading? So for the class of 2016, they will only need three?
Right, that's what we decided on.
So I'm, I'm wondering, when you come back for the second reading, that is still gonna have to say three. Um, otherwise, otherwise, it just notes that four credits are going to be required for the two classes from now, and it won't really articulate what next year's class will have to do.
So we leave it three, but make the note, put an asterisk beside it and make the note that in 2017.
Or you could put three or four credits with the asterisk.
That would make sense.
That would be, yeah, three or four.
Well, we could have the second reading down the road at the beginning of next, say, school committee year, right?
It does have to be.
No, but it's still, it doesn't, if you put four, that's not true for 2016.
And it does have to be clear for next year.
Correct.
So I would put three or four credits with the asterisk.
And we'll say, though, this is what is in the student handbook, because that's, we just matched this up to the Foxborough High School student handbook, so.
Or you could leave it four with the asterisk, I'm just making some suggestions.
That's my preference.
And then say, beginning with the class of 2017, four credits required. For the class of 2016, only three are required.
I think that would be the better change right there.
Okay, that's fine.
It would be clear.
So leave four asterisks in parentheses at the end of that?
No, I would go down to where the asterisk is in red, where it says, beginning with the class of 2017, four credits will be required in mathematics.
Right.
For the class of 2016, the requirement remains three credits or something.
Only, only three credits are required.
Only three credits are required.
And leaving it as is, four with the cross-out three? I mean, four instead of the three?
Or instead of the three.
That way for people only read the table, other than that one year, it'll be correct.
Yeah, that makes, that, that's great.
We'll have to amend it again next year, once the class of 2016 graduates.
Right, it does strike that second part of the.
Do you want to put in the column where it says mathematics to 2016, three credits?
For the class of 2016, only three credits in mathematics are required. Only three credits in mathematics are required. That'll do it.
Mm-hmm, I think that'll do it.
Thank you for letting me clarify while it was still on math.
No, and we, we made, this is a change we might want to note, um, before the student handbooks go to print for the high school, too, and make sure that it is clear there, because that's, honestly, um, I took the handbook and matched it up to, handed it to Janet and said, just make the two match. So I think it's a good clarification, especially when seniors are sitting down to, you know, make their schedules and make sure they have everything they need for next year.
The only thing, if I'm understanding right, is that then we need to address the language in that very first sentence of the section two.
Right.
Well, I think they still need twenty-four credits. Only three of them have to be math, but if I'm remembering this correctly, I mean, it says, well, so the asterisk's down at the bottom, beginning with the class of 2016, twenty-four credits will be required to graduate.
I think that is true.
Okay.
I think we changed, two years ago, I think, when you changed the math requirement, we changed the overall graduation requirement to twenty-four credits. Three, three for math for 2016, four for 2017.
Okay, good.
If I'm, I'd have to go back, but this is what the student handbook said.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So I, it is not what our policy manual said, so this is why we're adding this in.
Well, the paragraph below, it says if a student does not meet the twenty-two credits.
No, that's got to say twenty-four. I just actually, can I, can I get back to the reading part and then get through it? And then we'll go back to any questions, because I don't want to miss anything. So we're at world language, parentheses, in the same language, two credits. Wellness grades nine and ten are required. Now, you know what, actually, that, we need to change that. It says wellness grades nine and ten are required, but now we have a requirement for all four years. So should we just strike?
Yeah, it should just say wellness, two credits.
It just says wellness, yeah, it's a change, it's actually a change from one credit to two credits, yes.
Which makes sense, because it's a half-credit each year.
So we should strike that, see, every time you look at these, you make, find a difference, so I would.
So just put wellness is going to.
Just wellness. Two credits. And then there, there is a double asterisk next to two credits, because if you go down to where the double asterisk said, it says, beginning with the class of 2016, two credits will be required in wellness, so.
Do you need that now?
Hmm, probably not, because once this policy takes effect.
Actually, I guess we, we don't, because that's.
That includes them next year.
That includes them next year, you're right.
Because that's not a phase-in after this year at all, so.
That is true, so that is, we can take that out and take the double asterisks out, that's good.
Take out the double asterisks and take out beginning with.
Yep, take out the whole sentence below, this is a good, this is, it's a good parsing of our graduation requirements. Electives, six credits, and a passing score on the MCAS examination, including approved alternatives per state mandate. So that remains the same right now, that's currently a graduation requirement. And then we do need to include the language, I think, at the bottom, where it says, beginning with the class of 2016, twenty-four credits will be required to graduate. If a student does not graduate with his or her class in June, all credits must be completed by December 31st of that calendar year in order to be considered a member of the June graduating class.
Do you need, beginning with class of 2016, since we're not doing it for the other part? Just having twenty-four credits required to graduate?
I guess, I mean, it is in effect next year, I think you're right, we can, we can take that out. So these, these are changes we will need to make, um.
So the only thing, only statement that we are.
Just twenty-four credits will be required.
Actually, yeah, if a student does not, that statement is down below. So you, you meant that to replace the paragraph below, if a student, because the old one said August 31st. So this is a replacement for.
Oh, the whole sentence. So this is what is in our, currently in our Foxborough High School handbook, okay?
This is right here, this same sentence is right here.
It's a redundant.
It's right there.
Can I ask a question, though?
Well, one says August, well, now, which is, which is correct, August 31st or December 31st?
If, I, I'm gonna have to ask now tomorrow, but that basically, if it is now December 31st, that basically replaces, or is the correction for the last sentence in this policy.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just find out the exact date.
Yeah, I'll.
Joe, can I ask a question? Sure. If I do the math for 2016, it's twenty-three credits, and 2017, it's twenty-four credits, because your math thing doesn't kick in in 2000, until 2017.
Correct.
So it's still a three for next year, and those are twenty-three when you add them up, and it's twenty-four the year after.
I will get clarification before your second reading. So it sounds like only twenty-three credits are required for the class of 2016.
But I'm pretty sure that we bumped it up.
So if it says in the handbook that twenty-four, then we're missing a credit somewhere. Fine, I get it.
And that could just be in electives for.
I will, I will go over this with someone in the high school.
Thank you, because this was just directly taken from the high school handbook.
Right.
And I was presuming that everything in the handbook was correct, so.
I think what's been complicated is, like, the, the.
The stagger.
Right, it's like the wellness started phasing in, and then math is phasing in, so different things are phasing in at different times and with different loads, credit loads.
Once we get to the class of 2017, everything should be consistent unless we have any additional changes, but just to, just to.
Well, it may read Park instead of MCAS by then.
Well, that, we, yeah, that is true, too, we'll see.
So why don't we give you guys time to clean this one up, and then come back and do another first reading of it when it's cleaner? Would that be all right?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Perfect.
And I think the other two first readings are completed and straightforward and a great job.
I, I do think we need to get this part done, so they can print, print the handbook.
Since you did have a first reading, I think the next one would be considered a second reading, but you don't have to vote on it, since so much of it is substantively tweaked, you could decide today to wait till the third reading before approving this particular one.
Right.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
I just have one question, and it may not matter, but on the wellness, where it is taking wellness each year, two credits, does it need to specify that it's each year?
No.
Okay.
No, because for, for example, a student who needs, say now, three credits in math, or let's say it's four cred, when it's, it's four credits in math, they could double up on the math in junior year in order to take something, an AP of something else, senior year, or something they're really interested in. So you, you should not limit your policy to what year they have to take things in.
So a student could not take wellness junior year if they, if they couldn't arrange their schedule and take an entire year of it, if they had to.
Some of the music kids, for example, that are doubling up in a, in a certain year in order to meet the requirement, so.
Trying to encourage them to do it that way.
So I think, in the, in the spirit of wanting kids to meet the requirement, but not wanting to box them in as to when, that it should not address that. Even the world language doesn't say which year you have to have your two years in the same language.
No, you could be taking two different, two different, well, many of them take three, so you could be taking two languages, different languages in the same year.
You could, as long as you take one of them a second year.
Correct. So if you check with Diana.
I will.
And then, um, perhaps you and Debbie and I could get together and straighten things out for the.
Sounds awesome.
Before our meeting on the fifteenth.
Sounds like a plan.
And move it along, so, there you go, all right?
So Melissa, just do that, and you'll graduate.
I'm pretty sure she's gonna graduate.
Do we need to do any action after this, so we just?
No.
We just have the first reading in the record.
Great.
Move them to the second reading, don't you? You, I think you vote to move them to the second reading.
Oh.
I don't remember doing that before.
Fine, let's not.
Yeah, I think we've had the first reading, and I think we're to approve after the second reading.
Okay.
Have to move to waive the second reading, but actually, that one, I think we're gonna have to actually read the second reading.
We, you know, we, somebody can make a motion to waive the first, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, nice meeting.
Okay, moving right along, we are to the Foxborough Public Schools Strategic Plan of 2014 to 2017, end-of-year update on progress.
Yes, so as you recall, in February, we had the mid-year progress. I think at that time, we talked about, oh, the strategic plan is so, it's really our long-term goals, that you, you, I, I don't know, I'm just gonna speak personally, and Amy can weigh in on what she thinks, but the mid-year update, I don't think offered a lot, because only a few months into the plan, I don't know how much, when it comes to these really broad goals, we actually accomplish month to month, it's more year to year. So I think the end, this end-of-year update on progress is very appropriate, and I think, I'd like the committee to consider next year not having the mid-year, the committee to consider next year not having the mid-year, because we didn't, we didn't have a lot to report mid-year. So here we are at the end of year one of our new strategic plan, and I think we've been over the vision and the mission and the values incorporated, and I will do a quick review to keep this short. The broad objective one, to continue to offer dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum, that promote critical thinking, creativity, communication, collaboration, and that foster high levels of achievement for all students by preparing them to be responsible global citizens. So you can see, when it comes to our three-year goals and strategies, that a lot, a lot of it is in progress, because it's our first year, so we're working on practically everything here. One of the things that you'll notice in the three-year goals is if it is something that's measured by our Culture and Climate Annual Survey, which we do in the spring, which have gone out, such as, goal number two, to increase the percentage of students who feel challenged at school by six percent, and that our baseline in two thousand fourteen was at seventy-four percent of all students in grades three through twelve, reported they feel challenged by the work at school, our goal is to increase it to eighty percent. We haven't yet gotten those results, so in progress, in, in the spring of two thousand fifteen means that we are collecting that data, we're looking to see how, while we've progressed toward our goal, we don't expect to get the full six percent in the first year, but we are working towards that. Everything else you see isn't changed a lot from our update in February. You can see that when it comes to our strategies around those global connections, as we heard tonight, that we are constantly looking for those global connections and increasing them, and, you know, that's, that becomes another strategy, increase opportunities at all levels for students and faculty to participate in global learning experiences. So we have a couple of things that were completed, but most of it is in progress. Amy, I don't know if you want to comment on any of these particularly.
I think some of the other things, in addition to the Culture and Climate Survey, is we had a very extensive professional development survey that was completed this spring with all teachers at assistance, everyone, and it was very lengthy, and we're using that to really drive a two-year professional development plan, and it speaks to some of these things, such as specific training for educational assistants to support students in high-needs groups, and really see what support is at a high level of familiarity, and what is at a level of priority as far as interest as well, and looking at how those two cross-reference with each other, and that information, we've been taking that through our Professional Development Committee and going through the full inquiry process, and really looking at how that will play out in the next couple of years in relation to what our district initiatives are at the same time.
And then one of your strategies, to add that third element, the committee did include that in, yeah, thank, thank you for that, it did include that in the FY sixteen budget, so that particular item would be marked as completed when the next fiscal year begins.
And the only other piece here to add, I think, is what we've talked a lot about as far as technology and technology integration, and there's a lot of work behind the scenes that's being played out through curriculum development and expectations and technology proficiency with teachers, and then with students.
I was just thinking about technology, are we due for Aaron's report back at some point?
Well, we did it during the year.
The technology plan at the end.
That we have technology plan.
Is it?
Update at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Yes, which is why we put this one in, because we thought reporting on two meeting plans in the same meeting might be a little much.
Good.
So that's why we went ahead and did this, this time, because we realized we had that the tech plan is actually a bigger update.
Good.
The next, so, we will make sure, I, I don't know if I remembered inviting Aaron to the next meeting, so let's make sure we do that. Any other thoughts on Objective One?
Nope.
Objective Two, to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, parents, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice, and a lot of the three-year goals were around analyzing our perception data, how people feel about the school, the public schools here in Foxborough, and we continue to collect that data in the spring of each year, and as you can see, we had some baseline data that spoke to the goals about a percentage of teachers described, reporting that they have collaboration time available with colleagues, that was an identified area of need for us, because only sixty-three percent of teachers reported they had that time kind of built into their schedule, and that, that is quite a challenge in, in education, I will say. So that, that is why our goal specifically called out for the three years is to foster and extend those opportunities, because we do think that that teacher collaboration really is key to all of the instructional improvements we're making, and, and how we're really going to reach the outcomes for students that we desire. And we definitely have either completed, or we made some pretty, pretty good progress on a few of the strategies, which is collecting the baseline data, developing the entry plan for the integration of the School Resource Officer, that's been completed, and at the end of this year, actually in line with that, I want to mention, we are going to meet and, and discuss what, what worked really well with the School Resource Officer, where we'd like to go next year, so we've got that on our docket to do. The one thing you see not yet, it is one of our more challenging areas, which is, this plan is intended to target mental health services, because we have many more emerging needs for students and families in the area of mental health, whether it's social, emotional, psychological need, and that is something that is quite complex, and we're, we've been studying it this year, but we don't yet have a plan for how we're going to adjust that or understand where, where the work needs to be focused, so we are working on that, and you should expect to see some good progress on that in year two.
I don't want you to make a lengthy comment about this, but while we're on the point about school safety, you had something today you had to deal with here at the high school that was a good test, I think, of working with the police department and communicating to the community and that type of thing.
Yes, so without saying a lot, because sometimes the more you say, the more it makes something, parents and staff members did receive communication today that, that there had been, I'll say, a rumor circulating over the weekend, and our police department really responded exactly as we hoped, we have a partnership agreement with them, and we did have the information prior to the start of school, they had determined it was still a safe school environment, but I would say that, just talking in generalities, which can be helpful, the, our police department, particularly Chief O'Leary, our school department, and particularly myself, I will speak for, that we are never going to put students in a situation that we deem unsafe, so if we thought that any school was an unsafe environment, we wouldn't bring kids in in the morning, so that, that would not happen, but we do believe in an overabundance of caution, which I know the, our, our committee, most of you are parents here currently, and I certainly know Mrs. Lord well enough to know that she certainly concurs, we, we believe in the philosophy of overabundance of caution, so sometimes our thorough follow-up can appear to the outside to be an unsafe situation that we have kids in, and it doesn't necessarily make it so. So we don't have to always follow through with an overabundance of caution, and if we didn't, nobody would have known anything, but we do believe, I personally would rather take that exposure and having to explain things to people and, and feel confident that we have engaged in overabundance of caution, I'll say, but, so that is always preferable, but that's what it was, so it can appear to people that things were concerning, but we, we never believed that, but we will always act that way.
I think from where we sit, this is a good, you know, as we're talking about school safety, everyone feeling safe, I think this is a good litmus test to look at our goals, our strategies, our procedures, and I think, so as some of us, you know, worked with you today and communicated with you today. We were able to see that, you know, the right things have been done to make sure that people are safe.
Yes.
At Foxborough High School.
Correct.
So, I, I don't think it's bad for us to have fire drills, if you will, maybe that's a bad term, but using that as a, as a general term, having experiences.
Yes.
That put our policies, our culture, our objectives to the test, so.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And, and I think it's important, I'm glad you said it, it sparked me to remember something I wanted to say, our, our high school has never been locked down, so when we have a stay in place, it's just, teachers keep teaching, students go to the bathroom with a nurse, they just go with an escort, so we know where kids are, to be, to be, allow us to accomplish something that we want to do without students passing in huge groups through the hall, and sometimes to do it in privacy, so that, that would, the same would be the case if, if we had a student that fainted, for example, and we had called the ambulance to come and take the student who had fainted and seems to be fine, but we want the student checked out, we would also do the same thing we did today, which is a stay in place to keep kids out of the hallway and away from witnessing, for the student's dignity and for the, for the ability to allow our EMTs to do their job, to be able to come in and take the student and go out, whatever the appropriate door is, without a lot of witnessing, so sometimes what we do can appear to be a lock, but it was not a lockdown today.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want parents to be reassured, and that's why I sent the email out, that there was a thorough investigation, there is no threat, and I think that's also important for, I mean, for, for everyone on all sides of the issue to know that that wasn't determined.
Okay, thanks, I didn't mean to take us off track, but I just thought while we're talking about school safety, it was.
Sure.
An opportunity to make a brief comment about this.
But I think that's reassured, we will always err on the side of overabundance of caution.
Before we go on to Objective Three, could I interject something? I just wanted to say, Objective Two, the school culture objective, was the one I worked on when we were on the strategic plan, and we, we feel, or we felt, as the planning committee felt, that it was such an important objective that we wanted to keep it, but when we started our strategic planning process originally, we didn't have any perception data, any cultural data, and the goal then was to collect it, and we have really done a lot of that, we had a stack of stuff that we went through and parsed, and this, these goals, particularly the mental health and guidance goals, were real, long-term ones for us as far as school culture, I mean, it's a really important, I just wanted to interject that, and so I, I, when you say not yet, we know you're working on it, and we know how important it is, but that's not one that there's any easy answer to.
No.
And, and, but based on our perception data that we have collected over the last five years, it's a very necessary part of, component of our education system.
I'm glad Tina made that point, because this might not seem as concrete as some of the, as some of the strategies, but it's so important to us, because we believe without this, without a, a culture and climate that is strong and positive, and people feel safe and have a voice, nothing else can happen.
Right.
So that's why it's very important to us.
And we also, not only, we decided we had to do that, but the big burning question was, how, now that we've identified we need to do it, how do we do it? That drove a lot of that discussion.
I was also thinking of this, having just done the update, when the kids were here about DECA, obviously, the students here think they have a voice, and they do, so.
It's great.
That was, that was pretty evident.
Love that.
And what they're showing is a good voice, on all kinds of levels.
Very good.
All right, so Objective Three is to enhance the district technological capabilities and infrastructure to provide an increasingly safe and supportive physical and academic school environment, so this kind of dovetails to what we were just talking about, so I'm going to make sure I look at Mr. Yugna to update us on some of these things. So we have a lot of things that are still in progress, improvements in functionality of our school safety measures, our school security measures, our infrastructure for technology, Bill can certainly speak the detailed language better, so I won't even try, but we've really made significant progress in some areas, such as expanding the full campus of the high school, so, you know, we are taking that completion of the San Burns Community Field and all its peripherals quite seriously, we're, we're going to continue that expansion effort until, you know, until we have a complete campus here at Foxborough High School, so that, that's my goal, and many other technology improvements that have been amazing this year, as you've heard before, so I'm going to turn it over to Bill to talk about some of the specific scene here in Objective Three.
Yeah, I, I think under, actually, the first strategy, which is the security measures, that was a twofold thing, one was the updating of our phone systems, the other is the updating of camera systems throughout, we're literally within days of signing off on the phone system, and we're waiting for our final, you know, renumbered setup on the cameras, so we hope to do both those programs this summer when the kids are out of the building, because there's some rewiring involved and stuff like that, so both of those should be, you know, completed by back-to-school timeframe. As far as, you know, the public safety thing, I, I think, as Deb said, we did do one in the fall of two thousand fourteen, where we had both police and fire involved in, in going through the buildings with us, and we still have a little bit of work there to do as far as the planning side of, of making some changes. As Deb said, on the, the full campus here, obviously, we have the lighting part that will be signed off to go forward this summer, and we're still working on the concession side of it. The borough school, we actually did do the submission in December, I, I mean, in January, February timeframe, and so that's out there, so now the next update that will come back to the committee will be what the MSBA does back in the December timeframe of two thousand and fifteen, hopefully with an approval to move forward from there. And then the final thing, on the efficiencies of physical, we just signed a deal with N-Grid to go to an LED process for all of our schools, we're going to change out all the exterior lighting, parking lot lighting, and everything to LEDs, the basic concept is about a two-year to two-and-a-half-year payback, but also gives us much improved lighting, which will also help us on our security side, so it, it's a twofold piece there. It's being actually funded through the rebate process, so that we won't pay anything additional during the, you know, the two-year to three-year timeframe, but we will get the energy savings that kind of, to a net equal each year, so.
And those are expected to last how long, so that's what I was most impressed with.
Twenty-two years. I won't, I won't be here when you have to change them.
So will these be brighter lights, Bill, like brighter, better, more.
Actually, the LED lights are more focused light, and so it's, it's, it's not that it's brighter, but its concentration is more in the area that you're actually trying to light, where the old halogen lighting and stuff like that, first of all, very inefficient in power usage, but also doesn't really, it tends to spread and go areas you don't want it to be, too, so.
So do we have to go to the planning board with this stuff, or get like butter, butter stuff on properties?
This is standard maintenance, actually, these tend to be less intrusive than the current lighting that you have on most buildings.
Great.
All set, questions on Objective Three?
Okay. And then our last, Objective Four, to maintain, maintain strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough. So most of our goals are ongoing, because each year, we continue to be fiscally responsible, we review per pupil expenditures and all student achievement data with you throughout the budget season and with advisory committee as well, we, in an ongoing fashion, foster mutually beneficial partnerships with local businesses and community agencies, a great example was the Street Painting Festival we just saw, where a local business came forward to support that, as well as Patriot Place, which was a huge business in towns, we had a large and a small business that came together to support that initiative, so that's, we always will probably report that as ongoing, because we're never done, and we're always looking for new ways to be transparent and new ways to support partnerships and to, and to expand those. Maintaining strong citizen taxpayer support, the evidence is the approval of the annual budget and budget requests at town meeting, and I will say, this is my fourth year as superintendent, and our budget, you know, CIP passed without questions, concerns, or comments in the audience, and I, I really credit all of you and, and our partners at the town side and the advisory committee, that we, we do a lot of work behind the scenes leading up to that, so it isn't that we just put a number forward and people just go ahead and vote for it, there's a, a lot of work that's done in the months leading up, so that people can have confidence in what we're putting forward, but I also think that this will always stay ongoing, because strong citizen and taxpayer support, to me, is, is a year-round goal, so every day, the interactions we have or the things that we do in partnership maintain that strong citizen and taxpayer support, so the evidence is at town meeting, but this is something that we think, I personally think goes on every day. And then promoting the Foxborough Public Schools within the town is on a personal informal level, as well as a formal level, that we have been doing the District Report Card each January, and we completed that particular strategy, and the budget process was as transparent as it has been this year, which is very transparent, we report our student achievement data regularly, the one thing that is a little bit more complex to us, to Tina's word a few minutes ago on the other one, is, is how do we really use our website to make it a little bit more live, and that, that is an issue for us, not in terms of the content, because there's so much richness to pick from, but who is actually going to be responsible for maintaining that and posting things, that we're struggling more with the, with this, with the human resource side of that, because there's so much to do, but we'll, we'll figure that out, so I would say, expect to see more progress on that in year two, since this is a three-year plan, I actually am okay with a couple of things that don't really get underway to the point where we'd like to report on them till year two. We have continued to develop intergenerational connections, as you know, last fall, we had our NFL Play Sixty continuing event, we had just a few weeks ago, our Bust of the Future event for seniors and citizens, which was.
That's still getting rave reviews.
So much fun, I, I think I might have enjoyed it more than they did, I, I know I've talked about it already, but I saw Vicki Lowe last week from the Council on Aging and Human Services, and I will tell you that she said the seniors are still talking about it, and those who didn't go, because they had a choral thing midday, wish they had gone, more came out of that, it was focused on technology, but I think I've said this before, but seeing the students through their eyes made me even more proud of the kids that go to school here, because their observations of things that they were wowed by were things that I notice every day, but to, for an outsider to say, I had no idea, second graders have that much confidence, to get up and talk about math in front of their peers, I had no idea high school students use technology to increase their world language proficiency, I had no, just, it made me so proud, so we're going to try to repeat that and do that, because we have.
On a non-choral day.
Best time, well, it was a non-choral day, when we planned it, I gave them complete cut marsh, if you will.
Oh, it was, yeah.
To, to pick the date, and they picked a date they had nothing scheduled, at the end, the, the serenading seniors scheduled an extra event for the Friday we had already scheduled it, so that's what happened, but when we first picked it, it was their choice day, so these people are too busy, so we, we just had, you know, a great time, so we continue to look for those, because they are pretty exciting. Questions on that?
Bust of the Future is one of the best ideas. I think it's way, it gets our seniors in town, gives them the opportunity to see what our kids are doing and why we are asking for the things that we are asking them to support at town meeting. I think it's a great outreach and to really see, you know, things like the lab, the music technology lab at the Ahern, I know was one of your stops.
There's so much fun.
And to see that in action is really something.
And they made us do it. They made us, Missy Anna Pink made us sit down and do things. But I would say again, that was Nancy Stockwell's idea, one of our local residents.
It's a fabulous idea.
She, I had the technology idea and she had the title, and I think it's so catchy and it was so fun. So, thanks again.
Thank you for doing it.
To be repeated.
Any additional comments or thoughts on the strategic plan update? I know we don't, I don't think we have to do this formally the way we do with budget, but I think it'd be good to read into record or vote into record our approval of the update, just to recognize that we give our endorsement of the progress made and agree with Debbie's report out. Is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
Anybody wanna make that motion to approve the update on the strategic plan?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Steve, we're just motioning. Yep, you got it? Okay. All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're coming up on the superintendent evaluation process.
Yes, we are. It's that fun time of year again, people. So I will just, I will just go over a few basics. We do have a new committee member, so I think it's always helpful each year to kind of review what you do. So I know everyone is a fan of the huge chunk of paper information I have to put in the packet, but I think it's important each year, even if it encompasses documents that our members have seen before, to put them in every year, because I don't expect you to go back and chase them down either. So for the public's purpose, so I've included a bunch of things. The first is an overview of that five-step evaluation cycle, which begins with a self-assessment where I think I am, and then goal setting, which you approve my goals at the beginning of the year. I implement the goals and those plans. And then around February, you do my mid-cycle review, which is the formative assessment. And a few years ago, Mr. Gardner, you suggested a way to do that, that we have not only found so helpful, but I actually use it with principals as well. So my mid-cycle, as you will recall, is kind of focused around, rather than my killing trees to give you documentations on the twenty-odd standards and elements in my particular job description rubric. What am I most proud of? What am I working really hard on? Which might not be something that's accomplished, but what am I really working hard on? And then what do I, what am I most challenged by? And so that, those three questions have really served us well to focus on the standards that have been my focus for the year, I feel. And the same thing's been helpful for principals. So I want you to know that those, that way of theming the mid-cycle review has been really helpful beyond my evaluation. And then that cycle, that annual cycle concludes with your summative evaluation, which is a summary, summative result of what you think of my year as a superintendent. So it included that overview, as well as a simple overview of the four major standards, which are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Under each of those four standards, there are many subtopics, if you will, which are called elements in the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System. So what you have attached to that is the Department of Education's Implementation Guide for Superintendent Evaluation, which is quite lengthy, and it includes all of the considerations that are made in the superintendent's evaluation. That is followed by summative report forms and what they generally look like. And why I think that's helpful is the summative forms identify each of those elements. So for example, under professional culture, standard four, you will see four A, commitment to high standards, and how does that manifest itself throughout the year in my role. Four B is cultural proficiency. Four C is communication, which is written verbal and interpersonal communication. Four D is continuous learning. Four E is shared vision. Four F is managing conflict. So it delineates the specific indicators under that broad standard. So you get to actually read all of the elements that I must work toward every year. And then it's got a little something in there about some marked goals. So that really provides all committee members with all of the overview information in the Massachusetts System for Educator Evaluation, which is the same one we use with teachers and administrators and certainly me. So after that, what I did is take the Department of Ed, what I do each year, and I customized the Department of Ed's forms to me. So the next section that you see stapled together that says "Forms," 2014-15 school year, you will see it's got my name, and then blank for the name of the school committee member, because the next step is for each of you to do an individual evaluation or assessment on how you think my year went. Now, the local rule here, which I think has been established, which is typical of most communities, is that any school committee member who has served on this committee for the majority of this year, as the superintendent completes that. So you remember in the past, people who rotated off the committee for whatever reason have completed an evaluation after the fact. So it really is the five members who served for the majority of my superintendent's year. So let's say that.
So does that mean Katie Adair already did one for you?
No, but she will. She, if you follow your prior procedure, she would.
And Marilyn will not.
I will not.
Because she hasn't been on the committee for the year.
Marilyn just took that big chunk of paper and went.
However, Mrs. Weiss-
Study it, study it well.
Oh, I will. I'll be ready for her next year.
But I will say, what I said to Ms. Yudin last year, is that I would still find it very valuable for you to look at that and come in to meet with me individually, as the others will do anyway, and give me your impressions from whatever seat you were in-
Yes, because I've been on a lot of boards with you.
And have that conversation, because I think it's really helpful for me to understand each member's viewpoint and how you view it and what you would like me to work on for next year, because those conversations actually have really helped me with my goals.
And we have worked on many boards together, so.
There you go.
Great, okay.
So that would still, so you can fill it out or not fill it out, but use it as a guideline for a conversation.
Absolutely.
So I think that that would be helpful to me. So your forms are there. So the next step for the committee is to use those forms to fill out as individual members, and then you meet with me one-on-one, and we go over your individual evaluations. After that, the committee submits your individual evaluations, well, to Janet, since she's your administrative assistant, but, and then to whoever served as the chair for the bulk of the year, and the, which will be you. And then the chair writes the summative evaluation, and then that is what is reviewed publicly.
And that will be in July?
August.
August.
Last year, we presented the readout on August 18th.
Okay.
This year, we have a meeting on the 24th.
Of August?
I don't know if you feel that's gonna be too busy at that time, but-
It doesn't matter to me, but one of the things that sometimes we, I don't wanna say waffle, because that's not a waffling, but in the school district goals, the ones that we share, each summer, we talk about the timing of the superintendent's evaluation. So you will see that last year, we thought the superintendent's performance would, the public evaluation would be conducted by July 2015. And I think we've thought that before, but it doesn't really happen. And so if you wanna make it August, I'm fine with that. If you wanna make it July, I'm fine with that. Doesn't matter.
Okay. I think when we get to other matters, we can maybe talk about the July date. But I think in terms of reviewing the process, Debbie, I think you've done a good job summarizing a complex process into the right set of milestones and steps. And also included in the package is your self-assessment, which you've completed.
Yes. So that is a requirement for me to tell you how I think I did. I will say, if, in case you don't have your papers from last year, when it comes to rating myself on the standards and elements, you know, in terms of where I thought I was with the little X-boxes, I didn't change any of those. I really looked, not because I didn't wanna give it the time, but I really looked carefully at where I'd assessed myself last year in year three, and this being year four. And I really felt that what I thought of my performance last year was similar. I think that it gives a good picture of what I think my strengths are and what areas I think I'm okay in. And I didn't feel the need to change it. What I did change was the description, the comments boxes, and to update that on anything that I think could happen. And obviously, what changes each year are my goals. So that first page that you see, my specific goals, there's one professional practice goal, there's a student learning goal, and there are three district improvement goals, and there is one other, which is the completion of outdoor athletics. So it's something that doesn't fall in one of the first three categories. So I do have six personal professional goals, and that certainly is customized to where I think I am and assess myself on that as well. So you will see that on some of them, I felt I had met most of those goals, but I hope that every year, I have a goal where I say significant progress or not yet, because I don't want all of the goals to be something I can achieve in one year. So if they're really needy enough, there ought to be one or two that's gonna take me a while to really get there, where I can say I feel confident I've met it or exceeded it. So that's as an explanation for that.
I think that's logical, too, that you would have a similar assessment of your own performance from year to year, unless something really dramatically changed or something, you know, unexpected happened. Now, you did blow it with six snow days.
I really did.
Your weather assessment-
Whatever that weather assessment is, I'm fine with that. Yes.
But aside from that, no, I, you know, let me reverse what I said a minute ago. Why don't we spend a minute as a committee just talking now, and then we'll get to other matters, about the timeline, because I wanna make sure the committee's comfortable. But we sit here June 1st. Debbie's just explained the process. We need to complete the forms, complete our assessment, turn them in to Janet, have a one-on-one with Debbie, and then it won't take me long to put stuff together. Do you guys feel comfortable that we could have that done? Assuming, let me make an assumption that we have a meeting in, you know, mid-July, let's just call it, which is six weeks. Do six weeks give you enough that we could put this back on the agenda for July, or would you rather have the time until August for the readout?
I have my meeting scheduled with Debbie on June 18th, so I'm good to go.
Yeah, what's with you people?
What's with us, Dave? Tina's already on the docket.
Tina wants to go to the beach, so.
But I think, it is, last year, I thought it worked well, so I think you do have your, you know, you have all your ducks in order. Last year, by the end of June, I think I had met with each person individually. So by July 1st, or thereabouts, I'll say, by the Fourth of July weekend, the individual assessments have been turned over to the chair. So that seemed to be a good timeline. And so that, there will be this, a similar agenda item two weeks from now, and the reason we will keep the superintendent's evaluation on it, as we have other years, is so that you have two weeks to consider all of this.
Right.
And the goal of this is an agenda item next time, since my evaluation is entirely public, except for the individual meetings, is to, for you to really think seriously, is there any other evidence that you need me to come back with at the next meeting? Is there an area, a standard, an element, where you don't feel you have enough information to make that judgment? Because I have, as you remember, if you asked me in the individual meeting, I'll go chase after stuff and provide it for you, and that was helpful last time. But if it's something that generically you think the whole committee would be interested in, then that gives me an opportunity and a window to come back with more information. So rather than do what we did the first year as a learning process, which is to give you the big, big binders with so much stuff in it, this is a little bit more customized. Now we get what the standards are, everybody seems to understand them. Is there an area you would like further documentation and alter that next meeting? And then we're off.
So Steve and Debbie, do you feel like six weeks is enough to get through the process? You okay? Steve?
That sounds fine.
So we can technically plan for July readout. That takes a little pressure off the August 24th meeting, I think, too. Okay. Any other comments, questions for Debbie? Just for the record, I will reach out to Mrs. Adair and ask if she would like to participate. I'm comfortable if she chooses not to, because I don't anticipate us having dramatic variations of opinion. And I don't know what her situation is right now, but I'm gonna go through the formality of inviting her to do so.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Makes sense?
Yeah. I'm sure if she can, she will, but I think it's good to ask her, and I wouldn't have a problem if she was occupied with other things and couldn't, could not participate this year, I think, to lead way.
And Marilyn, if you wanna sit through any of the process or see it, you're welcome to, but it's not, it's not as difficult to pick up as it might seem, at least as the way it seemed to me the first year, so.
Could I sit in with one of you as you are doing it with her?
Well, no, that's-
That wouldn't work?
No.
No, but I think, but I think what you could do is sit with one of us, and we could explain the process with the forms and how we think about it.
Okay.
But we could also, we could also do that this time next year, so.
Okay.
The other thing Marilyn might find instructive, you know, the binder was a tremendous amount of work, and I'm glad we don't do that every year, but-
No more paper in my house. I'll show you my first-year binder. I still have it.
You know, I'll be honest, it was very eye-opening, the amount of work that goes into the job that you do, Debbie. I mean, we know you do a lot, but-
I will be happy to show you.
Is that like a strategic planning on our paperwork that we have?
That's actually a really good idea. You know, the first year, really because it was such a big learning experience, the first year, I provided a binder with every single one of the standards and elements you saw in here, with specific documents that I showed how I met those standards. And so once you realize what kinds of, I will say, what everyday or regular things I do to meet those standards, you don't need to get that level of detail every year. So I think that's actually a great idea. So when we meet individually, we'll start with the evidence I provided that is quite detailed.
Okay.
And then you, I can explain how the process has evolved. And there's really no other thing to sit in on. It's individual meetings, and then your individual evaluations go right to the chair.
Okay.
So there's nothing actually behind the scenes you're missing.
Okay.
And so I think-
That'll be helpful.
Okay. Ready to move on? All right. Thank you, Debbie. Okay. Other matters? Go ahead.
I think we all share the same sadness for the loss of Sharon Lawson, and we didn't get to mention it at the beginning. And Bruce, you and I did talk about that. It was my fault. I distracted you at the beginning, but we do need to recognize the loss of Sharon Lawson to our community and to our town's administration. She was a wonderful woman.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. She really was a terrific town planner, and she will be missed by this whole community.
Mm-hmm. That was unexpected and very, very sad.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Actually, I'd like to say, what a wonderful, busy theater weekend I have just recently had in Foxborough. First of all, it started on Friday. I did go to the IGO skip plan of the seven habits, and it was delightful. Then I wish Mikhail was here, because she had a very successful first annual murder mystery dinner that worked very well, and I couldn't, I didn't get it. I still can't figure those things out.
That's all right. Our FHS drama club-
It was like, I was partway there, but not all the way there.
Debbie and I sat together, and neither one of us could figure out who the murderer was.
I didn't, I didn't even, I couldn't, they wanted, they wanted you to hand in your paper. I said, "Oh, my God."
Sometimes they don't decide to the end, because I was in one, and I was, ended up being the murderer, and I didn't know I was. They put the gun underneath my chair.
Oh, no, well, no, but this, yeah.
The one tree plant?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But it was, and then on, on-
Can I just comment one more on that Friday night?
Yes.
I didn't get to go, because I had a personal conflict. But you know when our drama club students provided the update for the Teenage Learning Highlight, and they talked about how the spring performance was student choice, and they decided on the murder mystery dinner theater? I'm happy because that's the idea they had, that they came up with, and rave reviews, everybody I've talked to that's been there. But that night, even though I couldn't be there, I felt like I was, because I was getting texts from Mrs. Myers-Pacla and Mrs. Lord about how terrific it was during it, and I really regret that I had to miss it.
She was not going to bed without knowing this.
Every person said, "This was awesome." So kudos to our drama club students.
Right.
It really was wonderful.
Yes, and then on Sunday afternoon, I love medieval folklore, you know, historic novels based on fact. Anyway, the Borough School did a delightful little musical based on, on, well, it's a whole series of books. Now I have to read the whole series of books. They sound perfect. But this one was focused on a-
Magic Treehouse.
The Magic Treehouse on the night. And of course, the same message was in it as in that marvelous book, The Secret of Nim, where, you know, actually, the answer is inside yourself. But I had a very Foxborough theatrical weekend.
Nice. Anything else, Debbie? That's great.
Good luck to our seniors.
Yeah?
Good luck to our seniors.
Tina?
Yes, I have a few things, but it's been a busy week. Last week was a really, a lot of good stuff going on. I wanted to thank the Ahearn PAC, because they brought a wonderful psychologist in to speak to parents. Joanie Geltman was there last Wednesday and did a lecture on adolescent psychology that I personally found very valuable. But the Ahearn PAC funded that, and it was, it was very worthwhile and well-attended. That was great. The Splitsville event Thursday night was excellent, a good fundraiser, and many thanks to Melissa Maling and Mary Jo Carnino and Mrs. Spennelli. We've got a bunch of upcoming events that I, I think will be fun and exciting.
Do we know how much to date that fund has grown to?
I, I have a ballpark figure, but I don't want to say it. I'm going to have, I'm actually going to have an agenda item at the next meeting with an update, because we have the, I just, that was where I was going to go with one of mine, too, so I'm glad, I know you have more. But Splitsville's been a great partner with us, talking about a business community partnership. So, we expected to have a 50-50 split on the proceeds from that night, and they gave us 100% that night. They came up after the event had started and said, we have discussed it, and we're not going to take any of your ticket sales, 50-50. 50-50 is a good split. People were saying, wow, for any business entity, to give you a 50-50, it's usually 20, 30, maybe percent. So, they gave us all of it, and they gave us 20% on the bar bill.
Oh, my gosh.
Which was amazing. I know.
Thank you, Splitsville.
And so, upcoming in June, there's, Monday through Thursday, where anybody who does takeout or dine-in on those four nights and brings our, we call it our coupon, but it's basically our flyer.
Which, which night?
June, I put it in the last packet. The last packet has it all in there.
15 through, okay, June 15 through 18.
Yeah, it's four days.
I think it is, yes. But in the last school committee packet, it was all in the other information.
Right. I just have to.
And then we have a student tournament of champions bowling event after school next Tuesday. So, talk to Mrs. Brown and get a bunch of kids to enter their teams. I haven't even had a chance to check with her, which I meant to today, but then other things were happening. Students or faculty, it's after school, 3:30 to 5:00, and we give prizes to the top three teams. And then, and we have the Sam Burns Community T-shirt sales. We had a lot of pre-orders, and we have a lot of current orders, and we're going to be selling them at a booth at Founder's Day.
Great.
So, that is a good fundraiser. And then we're going to see where we are as we end school, see how much we've raised, and then we're going to develop some other plans for that.
So, we'll wait for that report.
Yes, but I'm going to have that at the next agenda. But I can't say Melissa Maling, Mary Jo Carnino, Carnino enough, because those two dynamos, it's all you need, committee, and Caitlin Brown, obviously, and myself. But we're four determined women, determined to really raise some cash.
And there were over 60 people that participated, right?
Yes, plus we had a lot of donations that, of people who couldn't even go.
That was fun.
We were there.
Have a good night.
All right, Tina?
All right. Not to, I know we're over time, so, but quickly, the dedication of the baseball fields on Wednesday was fantastic. Thank you to Bill Yukna for all of his hard work, and to Dave and Ellen Feldman, and Bruce's remarks were fantastic. And it was a good afternoon. It was a really good afternoon. And the fields looked wonderful. The flagpole looks terrific. The Guy family is very moved. The baseball team was there, the sign balls, the whole thing was a wonderful community event. Another wonderful community event is was our Foxborough against Diabetes 5K. I wanted to congratulate all of our students who ran in the race. It's one of the best things about that race, is that there are so many kids that run, and they do the running clubs. Betsy Acoin does the running club at the Taylor, and there's one at the IGO.
Michelle McCarthy was doing it as well.
And I saw Michelle McCarthy and her Borough believers.
We're always, the weekends can be busy. So, Michelle and I were back and forth about something she needed to ponder, and the last text said, I'm going to think about it while I'm on the fad run, Foxborough against, and then I'll get back to you. That's what she did.
I saw Michelle. I saw Pete Regan there. So, it was very well-attended by Foxborough Public Schools. And my last thing is that the Ahearn seventh grade band and seventh and eighth grade band and orchestra and chorus, they combined the seventh and eighth grade, had a phenomenal concert on Thursday. I have gone to a lot of concerts lately, and this one was one of the most fun shows. Ms. Pink did such a great job with the chorus. I mean, the orchestra was fantastic, the band was fantastic, but the chorus really outdid itself, and I just had to say something about that.
I only had one other, and I'm sure there are things that I've been to. It's starting to get busy. This is run up to graduation. So, kudos to our seniors. I hope you really enjoy this week, and it's just, there's so many wonderful celebrations going on this week, and then Sunday's going to be marvelous. But I do want to mention that yesterday, I thought St. Mary's had a wonderful send-off for Father Steve, who's done so much for our schools. I know this meant something to you to recognize him as well. And I thought they did just a terrific job acknowledging the role that he's played in our community, as many of our clergy do. And we will miss him terribly, but he's done an awful lot at our school, so I wanted to mention that. And I know his first day in the new place is tomorrow morning, so not a lot of a big break. So, thank you, Father Steve, for everything you've done, and for, just, he's just part of the fabric of the community, honestly. So, it was bittersweet, wasn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was going to hit that one as well. I won't prolong it due to the tower, the hour and the time. I'll just say thank you to you for participating in that program, which I didn't know you were going to do. So, thank you for your role in that. But yeah, we will miss Father Steve.
Our graduation is next.
It's Sunday.
And what time are we due here?
Usually around 1:15, 1:30 for the two o'clock. In the guidance, yes.
Any other other matters? Other, other? I only had one other one, which I'm just going to do as point of information and ask Janet to help me get a response. I won't take time to discuss it now. But our next meeting is June 15th, I believe, and I have to present at a school board meeting in Texas that night for business.
We can go.
We can go?
Yeah, we want Texas.
Non-flood area, right? Non-flood area. Wait, wait, Ms. Yudin.
Which part of Texas?
So, when do you want to move it?
Dallas area. Well, I'd like Janet to help me. We can either move it potentially to, sometimes we move it to the Wednesday, because select minutes sometimes to Tuesday. That would be the 17th. Or the vice chair can run the meeting. I'd hate to miss it, because we have our retirees, but I also don't want to, I also don't want to inconvenience everyone for my schedule. So, Janet, if you could maybe just do a quick.
Well, we have all the retirees.
Debbie, let's, let's not, let's not go into it now, because I think we're running late. Let's just ask Janet, if that's okay with you. Let's just ask Janet to poll everyone involved and whatever, because I don't want to mess everyone up. And I'm fine either way. The vice chair would do a great job, so.
Thank you.
So, with that.
So, would you, before she polls you, would you like her to poll all the retirees? Because they've already gotten letters of invitation. So, I just want the order you want them in. Do you want her to poll you?
No.
And then if it's changed, poll them, or do you want to poll them, and then she'll poll you?
Let's just have Tina run the meeting, if they've already sent out the invitations.
I agree. I was going to think of that.
Yeah, if they've already sent out the invitations, Debbie, it's too busy of a month.
We've heard from about six or seven of them that they're pending.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking, yep, let's go with that. Okay.
Absolutely.
We need a roll call motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion that we go into executive, and we will return to open session. Open session afterwards.
Yeah, returning to open session.
For the purpose, no, we need to make it formal, for the purpose of negotiating strategies, discussing negotiating strategies with the union personnel, the Foxborough Custodial Workers Association, and the Foxborough Crossing Guards.
Steve seconded?
Yeah, second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, can I get a motion to reopen the public session of the.
I would like to reopen the school committee meeting on June 1st.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we are returning from executive session, where we discussed the negotiating strategies with both the Custodial Workers Association and the Foxborough Crossing Guards. And one of those discussions resulted in consensus that we are ready to support a new contract for the Foxborough Crossing Guards, per our discussion in executive session and prior discussions between our representatives and theirs. So, we're delighted that that's the case. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that new agreement as discussed?
I make the motion to approve.
And a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero. As a result, the chair will sign the new agreement with the Foxborough Crossing Guards with thank you to their representatives and to Mr. Yukna and Mrs. Spennelli for good work down there. And we want to thank those crossing guards. We know they have a unique job within our district, and we appreciate what they do every day, rain or shine, or snow.
Especially this winter.
I was going to say, especially this year.
Especially this winter. They really are a terrific group, so thank you to them.
Keeping our kids safe.
Okay. Motion adjourned?
I'll make it.
Any further discussion? Five-zero. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.